Uh. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Eastern Western Learning Connections. I'm Yang Wang, your host tonight and also the president of this nonprofit organization. Uh. We help people of different heritages uh overcome cultural barriers and get connected. So we bring uh learning, communicating and volunteering opportunities to the public, especially to the immigrant community. Um, in Canada, uh this land was first dwelled and built by indigenous people. But now, people from all over the world have landed in this country, build it and make it home for everybody. It's a great country, uh it's full of nice people, full of hope, but we also have problems. Uh, especially indigenous people, uh racial minorities, they face more barriers to prosperity. So we need to work together and work hard to build for a better future for everybody. In May is our Asian Heritage Month, and we want to take this opportunity to celebrate the contributions Asians have made to the country. And tonight, we are very much delighted to have two distinguished Asian women as our guest speakers at our Eastern West Dialogue. And they will share their stories, uh they will share their experience and their observations, what problems, barriers and opportunities they have witnessed in Canada. Uh, Xin Xiaoli is a city councillor for Scarborough North of Toronto. She came from Hong Kong many years ago, and she has had extensive work experience in Toronto. Uh, she is a very good communicator and a doer, full of initiatives. She became the first president of Toronto Real Estate Board, and because of her excellent community service, she has received numerous awards, including uh Duke of Edinburgh Silver Medal, the Queen's Golden Jubilee Medal, uh the Chinese-Canadian Legend Inspiration Award, Catalyst Award, and among many other honors. In twenty eighteen, she was elected to be the city councillor for Ward twenty-three. Um, and our other guest speaker, Talia Shamali, came from Iran. Uh, she was a lawyer in Iran. Uh, she came here, completed a university study in University of Toronto and York University, has had uh several degrees in English Literature, uh Women's Study, Law, and she is now the Education and Community Engagement Manager at the Canadian Civil Liberties Association. So this nonprofit organization promotes and protects the human rights and freedoms of all Canadians. Uh, she also volunteers as a mentor at Toronto Region Employment for immigrant employment councils.
I I'm familiar with uh their acronym and it's called TRIAC. So they basically connect um newcomers with old uh old new, old immigrants.
Thank you. Yeah, the so she is the mentor at Toronto Region Immigrant uh Employment Council, and also she sits on the advisory board for uh the Ontario Human Rights Commission. Um, she speaks English, French, and Farsi. And uh Xin Xia speaks English, Cantonese, Mandarin, and Hakka. So we have like two linguists with us. Thank you so much. Welcome. Uh, thank you for volunteering your time to come over, have dialogue with us. And uh before I turn it over to you, uh Talia, I will start with you. Um, and I want to thank our audience coming from uh various areas also. Uh, most of us, I believe, are Torontonians, but we also have people from Shanghai and I believe uh from Sydney, Australia, uh maybe other areas. Um, just give us a shout. Um, thank you. Um, so uh now I turn it over to you, Talia.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much. Um, hi, everyone. My name is, it's my pleasure and honor to be with you today. I also read um Council of Lies biography. I was very impressed and I was like, why did you want to have me in a panel with such an accomplished woman? But nevertheless, I'm here and I'm honored to be with you. Um, as Yang said, my name is Talia Shamali. Oftentimes, we Iranians have uh very poetic names, and mine is no exception. Talia means first rays of the sun, uh and it's a metaphor for someone who's always in front, who leads the way for the others. Big name to live up to, for sure. Uh, my last, my last name, Shamali, means someone that is from the north. My dad and his family were all born and raised in Gilan, a beautiful northern region next to the Caspian Sea. In this picture, you see a photo of a UNESCO heritage village called Masule, a small ancient village dating back thousand years in the north, known for its unique architecture. Every house's roof is another person's yard. Despite my last name, I didn't grow up in this unique village, or in the north, actually, but I still very feel very connected to the north and I visit the region whenever I go back to Iran. In fact, this picture was taken from our last trip back in two thousand seventeen by my husband. All right. Um, I grew up here in this um in the capital of Iran, in the city of Tehran, a city of twelve million people, chaotic, busy, loud, a city that never sleeps. Um, you see these magnificent mountains in this picture. Um, these tall mountains, um the old infrastructure and the cars makes Tehran one of the most polluted cities in the world. And yet, to me, it is the most beautiful city. Um, okay, not, maybe not the most beautiful, but definitely the one that is closest to my heart. Um, I was born and raised in Tehran. I lived there for twenty-seven years. I was three when the Iranian Revolution happened. At five, uh when an eight-year-long uh war between Iran, Iran and Iraq started. I was twelve when I was, when I lost my dad. I'm an only child, and I grew up with my mom, a five-feet woman who looked, looks incredibly small, but tough as an air. Despite everything that was going on in the country and in our personal lives, and believe me when I tell you that um a revolution, a war, and a loss of a parent, it's not even a nugget of what has happened to us, we still managed to get by. The circumstances surrounding my father's death and the unbelievable double standard that exists in Iran uh in Iranian justice system when it comes to women, um Iranian women are not considered to be worthy of many things. Um, after my father died, my mother did not, did not become my immediate guardian, even though she was very capable. In the absence of the father, your parental grandfather or a male relative becomes your guardian. And in my case, um my uncle, who at the time was suffering from a severe depression, uh became my guardian. My mom fought for my custody um and in court, but wasn't successful. But at the end, after reading many codes and laws, we found loopholes and brought a motion to the court. I became my own guardian at the age of thirteen. Uh, basically, a minor that was emancipated from her parents and was able to make big decisions about her own life. Apparently, at thirteen years old, running her own life is less scary than a middle-aged woman having custody, but this is what it is. Finding this loophole made me really interested in the law and justice. I realized that even within a seemingly hopeless system, you can still find and win some battles. I ended up in law school, and uh it was on my last year uh of law school that I met my future husband. A month into knowing and dating him, he told me that he is immigrating to Canada with his mom and his younger sister. I confess that up to that point, I not, never even thought about Canada as a future destination. My goal was to finish law school, to go to Paris, to continue my studies. I even had my university in mind. Um, I have family in France, and my second language is French. Uh, he moved to Toronto, and we still continued our relationship uh long distance. Um, we got married in two thousand when he came back for a visit, and he sponsored me to come here. A process that took two and a half years, due to mistakes that were made in Canadian Embassy in Tehran at the time and a maze of bureaucracy surrounding that. At the end, a somewhat angry letter that we sent to the Ministry of Foreign Affairs in Ottawa and them intervening resulted in my immigration visa in two thousand two. So, um, I arrived in Toronto in April two thousand two. Yes, I specifically chosen this icy picture of Toronto because it was freezing and it was that cold when I arrived. Like many other immigrants and newcomers, I couldn't wait to start my life here. So the next day, I went to the University of Toronto, uh Toronto's Law School and said, what can I do to get into law school here? I was a lawyer back home, and I wanted to become a lawyer here. The woman was really confused and said, oh, you cannot practice law here because Iranian law is different and your degree is not accepted here. I said, I know, that's why I'm here. What steps should I take to become a lawyer? And she got even more confused. Uh, see, at the time, I didn't know that there are organizations that can help you get these types of information for free. They wouldn't give that kind of information in the airport. I also didn't know anyone of my background who studied law or was a lawyer in Canada. My English was also very basic. The lady sent me to another department, and this went back and forth until I gave up and came home. It took me a couple of months of asking and looking for information. This is maybe it started, it started like using internet as a basis of information, so I used to go to libraries. Um, and I also had a minimum wage job at Indigo, seven dollars seventy-five cents uh for hour at the time, uh with no benefits. And at the end, I decided to start all over again. I uh went to university, got a bachelor's degree. At the same time, I started volunteering uh around the city, something that I highly recommend to friends and families, newcomers and my students. Uh, volunteer for a cause that you're interested in and be good at it. Take it as seriously as you take any paid position, because you never know if it actually becomes your job. My volunteer experience led to one. I started volunteering for a violence prevention organization in Toronto and continued even though uh even through my master's degree and the birth of my first child. And until, until I landed a job with them in two thousand eleven. Because of my background and my volunteer experience, I realized that I'm not more interested in legal information and legal education than litigating, which basically means going to court and argue for cases. And I find myself um doing a master's degree in law, feminism and public policy um instead of, you know, actually a lawyer that goes to court on behalf of clients. Um, in my years working in the gender-based violence sector, I got to work on some really amazing projects. The picture you see here is uh of a family law information for women campaign. Um, this project is designed to give women and women-identified populations a basic understanding of their own rights when it comes to family law, issues such as child custody, spousal and uh child support, and intersections of family law with other areas of law, um like uh criminal law, domestic violence or immigration laws. The beauty of this legal information campaign is that not only is designed for women, the information is available in fourteen languages, including simplified and traditional Chinese, Somali, Tamil and Urdu. It is also available in multiple accessible formats, such as Braille or audio, and have customized legal information, materials for indigenous women, Muslim women, and so on. The heartbreaking reason uh behind campaigns such as this is that lawyers are incredibly expensive in this country. And oftentimes, when families break down, women are the ones who cannot afford to get legal consultation or get a lawyer. They often have to make a hard decision between paying rent or putting food on the table or getting legal advice. So a high percentage of them um uh ended up, end up self-representing uh in the court. These types of campaigns are um are not, 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 they're not enough, but it's better than showing up in courts not knowing what you're talking about. So they're designed in a way to empower women, uh especially understanding the language, uh understanding the legal information in their own lang, language. So um these types of projects, um and and the other um projects, to these types of projects and many other similar projects, I got to work with some incredible um groups of people, um incredibly diverse um people in Ontario. Um, and because of all these projects and all these works were community-based and the communities that we work with were involved uh from the beginning, from choosing, producing and delivering these legal informations, um materials and workshops. These days, I work for the Canadian Civil Liberties Association. This is a non-for-profit, non-governmental and nonpartisan organization in Canada which protects and promotes fundamental rights and freedoms for all people in Canada. Fundamental rights such as freedom of mobility, freedom of expression, freedom of religion, privacy rights and so on, uh that has been given to everyone in Canada regardless of their immigration status. Our job is to monitor all the levels of the government, from federal to provincial to municipal governments across Canada, and see if they're passing any laws or if they're thinking about passing any laws that might limit our rights and freedom in this country in a way that is not fair to all of us or to some of us. CCLA is mostly known for its court cases. We regularly take the governments to court. And um right now, because of all the emergency orders that are being issued and being reissued across the country due to COVID, we've been busier more than ever. Our job is to read all these emergency orders, making sure that these limitations that are being put on our fundamental rights are fair, are justified, are based on science, and it is for what the government is claiming it is for us to put, it is to protect us from a virus. But suing the government is not the only thing that CCLA does uh to advance equality and justice in Canada. We're also big believers of education as well, and that's the area that I work for. Um, each year, between the two of us in the education department, we talk to more than fourteen thousand community members and newcomers, refugees and immigrants and young people, as young as kindergarten-age children, about their fundamental rights. What are the rights that they have in Canada? Perhaps like me, they come from a country that where these sets of rights were not available to them. We also talk to them about the importance of getting involved and protecting these rights through voting, through peaceful protest or through advocating. We want them to not only think about their own rights, but also think critically about other people's rights. Oops. Um, I have the pleasure of traveling across Ontario and Canada when it's not a pandemic and provide information to people that gives them agency and options to take control of their lives. These workshops are free in Ontario and subject to funding in different provinces and for everyone who is interested. Many of these presentations I I do are in French, are in Farsi. I work with translators to provide workshops in different languages or to deliver them in American sign language, for example. Um, even when I'm not at work, I annoyingly provide information or talk to people. Uh, I'm not sure if it comes from my involvement in the justice system at the early age or struggling in my early years in Canada to find information and navigate my way. Anytime I am in the position to share information or if I think people might benefit from knowing something, I um talk, I stand up and give information. The, the picture that I lost was actually the first picture in my slide, and I wanted to end with saying that the way I see it, our rights and freedoms are kind of like this historic village that I showed you a picture of at the beginning. Now, everyone's backyard might be someone else's roof. And freedom of no one is safe when freedom of some, of some of us are unsafe. So all of us have a duty or uh if we have a chance to stand up and defend other people's rights and freedom. Thank you all for listening to my stories.
Okay, so yeah, Talia, I'm very curious about um like the Iranian community here in Toronto. So maybe later you can share with us some of your tradition and uh what's, you know, what is it like um uh in the, the Iranian community here? Um, cause um yeah, that's uh for me, I'm very curious. Um, and yeah, and your experience, um I wonder uh what kind of uh barriers that in addition to that, you know, lack of information, um have you ever encountered some like other barriers um
Oh, absolutely.
To your life here.
Yeah. I think for many people, I don't think that's a um, that's a struggle that's unique to Iranian communities, but many people who speak English like me with an accent, oftentimes we are overlooked or our knowledge has been questioned just because we have an accent. Uh, and there are some stereotypes that coming in with being an Iranian woman. For some reason, uh we, people think of us as, you know, very obedient or people who don't speak up, women who don't speak up, or uh you know, women who um, you know, are very feminine. I, so um for many of us, it's getting used to of being a racialized woman here and being someone who's a visible minority. When you open your mouth, some of us don't look that different or we look, uh we pass. Um, so uh it happens to me often when I enter a room, people automatically assume that, you know, I, I come from a certain class or um because I have an accent, I don't know many things. Uh, especially when I'm among lawyers, believe it or not, many of them explain laws to me like I have no idea, like basic legal things. Uh, in reality, not only I'm used to the civil law system, the Iranian system or the system that exists around the world, but also the common law system, because I'm deeply involved with this work, not in an educational level, but also with the cases. I'm the French spokesperson for the organization and I do talk a lot about law. Um, so uh the Iranian community here is also very diverse. Um, we, like many Iranian communities, um you know, we force our children to educate themselves as much as possible. Uh, I do this with my children as well. There's lots of pressure for you to become uh doctors and engineers. Um, lawyers are also getting some attraction because um I think immigrant parents are realizing that lawyers make uh lots of money, not, not lawyers like me who do uh non-for-profit works. We are poor lawyers. Um, but um I'm happy to say that, you know, it warms my heart to see that Iranian women, from the beginning, they formed a non-for-profit organization for themselves. We have the Iranian um Association of Iranian Women uh of Ontario. Um, we also have like non-for-profit organization. My community came together by themselves. They raised twelve million dollars to open a co, community center in Thornhill. And um after that, they um um opened, opened the center and then they got government's support. So uh we also have the biggest uh Iranian festival in Toronto outside of Iran. Uh, it's an art and culture festival that happens at Harbourfront every year when there's no COVID. Um, City of Toronto is actually one of the big sponsors of that. Um, and that festival alone, it's a three-days festival, brings about hundred fifty thousand uh tourists to, to, to town. So yeah, uh the food is amazing. I would encourage you to, to try it. Um, very easy and pleasing food and very interesting. And I see a question from Winnie. Um, Winnie, I uh finished my law school in Iran, so four years. I worked for four years in Iran. I was actually a litigator, lawyers in Iran. They're generalists, they do everything, family, criminal, contracts. Um, so I used to court in Iran, I used to go to court in Iran regularly. Here, I have a bachelor's degree and I have a master's degree. My master's in legal studies, but that doesn't give me, um, that, that doesn't designate me as a practicing lawyer in Ontario. I haven't had, I, I haven't uh sit for the bar exam in Canada. Any other questions?
Um, hi, Tanaya. This is Domei. Hi.
Hi, Domei.
Um, yeah, thanks for sharing your experience. I just have a, have a question regarding the CCLA.
Yeah.
That you, you provide lots of educational sessions, like educational services. On top of that, what else uh services that the organization provide to the community?
Sure. Uh, so CCLA uh does education, as you mentioned. We also do lots of report writing, and during this pandemic, we put out a couple of, a couple of reports, including policing during pandemic, uh ticketing across the country, how was the situation with COVID and ticketing. Uh, we do lots of um education on privacy, which is a very interesting um area of civil liberties these days. We do advocacy, so we form campaigns and ask people like you to join us. We do make recommendations to the governments to change a law or remove a law. That's what we call a legal reform. But for the most part, uh CCLA is known for bringing charter challenge cases to the court. Some of the cases that you might have heard of um in Canada, um it's one, it's the one about solitary confinement. We sued the federal government about uh seven years ago to end solitary confinement, which is a practice that happens in prison where uh prisoners are kept in isolation for a long time. We actually um won that case in twenty twenty, April twenty twenty, um just before going to the Supreme Court. Um, there's, there's, because of CCLA intervening, intervening, um we had a cap on solitary confinement and that cap was uh is fifteen days, but it's only recently that it's happening. And another one that we're involved in, these are apart from COVID cases, is uh a case uh against the government of Quebec about Bill twenty-one. This is a law that prohibits anyone who works for the provincial government, uh the government of Quebec in this case, to show any visible religious signs. And we believe, among other interested groups, that this is discriminatory against Muslim women who wear a hijab and Sikh men who wear a turban. Did I answer your questions?
Yeah, thank you. It's very interesting to learn. So
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very interesting to learn. Thank you.
Oh, invite me to do a workshop on CCLA for you.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Thanks.
No worries.
Yes, definitely. We'll invite you back later.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so now, now I'll turn it over to Xin Xia.
Thank you, Wang Yang. Thank you. I see so many different last names uh in here, English, Mandarin, Cantonese, and I saw a Hakka there too, I think. So, I mean, uh, I really thank you very much for having me today. Actually, tonight's uh I'm gonna be sharing with you actually my three tenets in life, my mantra, so to speak, mantra. It's very easy to remember, only six words. First one is work hard. Second one is live well, meaning enjoy life. The third one is give back. You don't have to take notes. Is, it should be all in your head, okay? All the new immigrants, when you first come here, you guys must be concurring with what I'm saying here. Do you have to work hard? Do you know? We have to work hard. We, I said to people, I have to work hard because twice as hard as a woman and twice as hard as a visible minority. That's, I have to work four times more hard than other people. So working hard and is, you have to be very, very, there's no, no such thing as overnight success. If you want to be successful, there's no such thing as overnight success. It takes hard work, determination and a bit of hustling. So I, speaking of hustling, you know, my son, um they are, well, I have two sons and both of them are quite uh established and both of them actually made it to uh to Forbes thirty and the thirty. So my, my oldest son Derek, when he sent to me a happy, happy Mother's Day message on Facebook, he said, "Happy Mother's Day to my mom," the original hustler. It makes me laugh so hard, because you know, you do have to hustle a little bit if you want to be successful. And the other thing is, you have to be committed. You have to commit. When you do, when you promise to do something, you must commit yourself. If I wanted to, to be councillor, I have to make a commitment that I really wanted. That's my goal setting. I, after I set my goal, I have to commit to be successful. Commitment, I will tell you a story about commitment. You will remember. It's just the story of the bacon and egg. One day, the chicken and the pig were having a row. They're having a fight. Well, you know, they were having, you know, an argument. The chicken said, "You know, I think I work harder than you. Do you know how hard it is to push that egg out? I, I use all my strength, you know, for those women, you know, we have had the baby, you know? You know how hard we have to push to get that baby out? It's very hard. Work hard. I work hard. Tough job." And the, and the pig said, "Do you know, I think I work harder." And she says, the chicken said, "Why?" And she says, the chicken said, why? You were just involved, but I am committed. I don't know whether you get it or not. We have to kill the pig to get the bacon. So, I mean, the chicken is only involved, like they're, she's not, she's not committed, she's just invol- involved. So that's a story about how, how you have to, you have to, um, you know, to, to really commit when you're doing something. And the other thing I wanted to tell you is that you have to, you must believe in yourself. Like the Toronto, uh, Star reporter said, Cynthia Li believes in Cynthia Li. You must dare to dream, okay? Even during the day, you can, you can do daydreaming, but you, you must dare to dream and the dream is your goal. Okay, so you must have an action plan to fulfill your dream so that you could be successful. And also, speaking of that, you must find a job, find something that you enjoy doing as your job, okay? I have a story to tell about that. When I first come over here, my, my sister said to me, you have to be a professional person, okay? You, you to make life, to make ends meet, to, to make a living, you have to, you have to be, you know, I, I actually study arts in in Hong Kong, you know, here, I, I don't know anything about science, you know, the physics, chemistry, all those things is no, I don't, I don't know any of them. But my sister said, in order to make a living here, you have to work in a hospital, maybe you, you can be a dietitian, you have to take food science, you have to be a doctor, you have to be an engineer, all these things, right? A professional. So I listened to my sister, so I had to, when I, when I go to great, great, uh, grade thirteen, we have grade thirteen in those days, grade thirteen here, I worked during the day and I finished my grade thirteen in the evening because I am a poor immigrant. With my sister and I live in a rooming house in Chinatown with rats and cockroaches. And we have to take turn making dinner, we have to take turn, uh, make, uh, going to, uh, to a shower, we have to take turns. So that's how we lived when we first came over here. So my sister said that that's the way to, to do it, but I wanted to tell you, you must find a job that you enjoy. And I've always even said to my, my, my son, my children and my, my staff now, if you enjoy what you do, you never have to work a day in your life. That is, you have to find the passion. And I let, I, I tell you, I have been, I have been a medical technologist, so I, I actually took into biochemistry lab, I worked in a hospital for a biochemistry lab for five years and I, I, I can't stand it. You know why? Because it's just, it's just a job for me, right? We are facing all this machine, testing, testing all the blood sugar and all these, you know, all these things for medical lab, you know, that's and that surrounding and I have to work shift work. I don't, I didn't enjoy it. So, but when my, my dad got cancer, I had to be in and out of the hospital and it hit me, it really hit me. So, and my, and, and then my next job would, you wouldn't believe, my next job is a flight attendant. So I actually went to, I, I have so many jobs, I'm telling you, I mean, I, I ended up in, 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 to be a counselor, but I was a flight attendant because I, I was very sick of my job is too monotonous, so I went to learn French. Okay, and I don't know why, I thought because it's, you know, Toronto is, uh, I mean, Canada is a mult, mult, you know, it's bilingual country, maybe I should, I should go and learn French. So I did. And then, and then part-time, I did some travel, uh, travel counseling, just as, um, as my interest, I love, I love, I love to travel. So I, when I, when I go to interview for the French, uh, school, the bullet, bullet school of languages, the interviewer said to me, I really like you. Well, if you're gonna be my teacher of Chinese, then you can get a staff rate of French. I can, you know, get a staff rate to learning French. I said, fine, wow, why not? So, so I, I, I had agreed to be trained to be a Chinese instructor, Cantonese instructor, that was in the eighties. So at that time, you know, people like to learn Cantonese, uh, at, at that time. Because, you know, uh, so I said, okay, fine. And then we had, we went to training and then I see all my peers. They, one day during lunch hour, they were all doing something. I said, what are you doing? They said, well, we're applying for flight attendant, we're applying for airlines. You wanna come? Do you know, this is kind of peer pressure. I said, okay, 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 let's go, let's go. So I put in application. I applied for Ward Air, I replied for CPA, I mean, those two, two, two airlines are already defunct, okay? CPA was merged with Air Canada, so. So I, I said, okay, let's go. So, so I, I got in, I was lucky. I mean, you know, I got in and, and, and after flight attendant, they laid me off. So they laid me off and I said, what am I gonna do now? I can have a, an option of going back to the hospital. I don't like it, I really don't like it. So what I did was, I said, let me go to travel because I enjoy travel, right? So I enjoy travel, so I went to travel. And then it was nineteen eighty-five, when, you know, the Hong Kong issue with the nineteen ninety-seven, a lot of people coming to Canada to kind of seek out for the immigrant, you know, they all wanted to immigrate to China, uh, from, from Hong Kong to here. So one day I, I actually, uh, took them around city tour of Toronto and go to Niagara Falls and I was a tour guide. Actually, I, 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 I mean, I took a job as a tour guide after I was a flight attendant. And then at the end of the four days I was with them, they said, Cynthia, do you know somebody who can sell real estate? I said, what? Real estate? Oh, I said, why? You know, the whole busload. We're all here, we're gonna be immigrating from Hong Kong to Canada in six months. Can you find us a good, a good real estate agent? You know what I said? I said, yeah, 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 six months, okay? You find me, I will be your real estate agent, okay? So within that six months, I changed a profession to be a real estate agent. And ever since that, I never looked back. Okay, so basically, I found my job that I like. You know, with, uh, you know, with a biochemistry job, it's just like testing your blood and, you know, blood sugar and your, you know, all these, your urine, your, you know, is, is a testing, is, is nothing, it's not a people business. But then with a flight attendant, you know, is serving people. It's a people business and I find like, I like it, you know, imagine, for those people who came six months later, they actually, I bought all of them houses. You know why? It's all about like and trust. I always, when I do my training, I'm, I am actually a faculty member of the Real Estate Institute of Canada, you know, for the, for the, um, fellow of real estate, I teach them communications and, uh, negotiation. So I told them, if people like you, they'll trust you, you can sell anything to them. So that is working hard. So Realtor is to helping people finding their dream home, right? And counselor is to help people and be their voice to government. So this is, I found my niche, I found my passion, because I really enjoy helping people. I enjoy serving people. So those so much are hard work. So I ended up, there's in, in between, there's tons of stories, but I'm not gonna share, I mean, I can, I can be all day and all night here. But let me move to my second. The second of my mantra is live well. Live well, meaning you have to enjoy life, right? And then after that, I started a family. So with my two sons, you have to enjoy life with them. I wanted to tell you, for those of you who are working, you must commit yourself to balance your work with your family life. Because your children is just like your investment. You put, how much money you put in the bank? And at the end of the day, when you grow older, you will get out so many, so much money from them. It's like an investment. If you don't, if you don't, uh, you know, uh, stay with them and you don't grow up with them and you're just going to work, you wouldn't get nothing. So what I usually do is, when I, uh, live well, you know, when I have my, my, my family, I take my children every holiday, summer, March break, Christmas, three trips away from Toronto. Very important. People ask me, how do you teach your children to be so successful, to be, to made it to the Forbes thirty and the thirty? I said, look, I never, never teach them. I just show it to them. And you just communicate your value to them when you are traveling with them. That's very important, because you know, you're gonna, you, you, you will, you will share your value with them when you are traveling with them. That is, because you know, if you stay in Toronto, you're gonna be too busy for them. So make a point to leave Toronto, leave, okay? And enjoy life, one is your family. Do you know, my, my son, uh, let me, let me, let me, let me share with you a face, another Facebook message of my, my, my son, okay? Uh, he is very important because you teach them something that cannot learn from, from books. And, uh, every Mother's Day, they send me stuff and I, sometimes I will, I will, uh, share with them, share with people. My son, my oldest son, one day he said, you know, the original hustler, the next year, he wrote to me, Happy Mother's Day. Thank you. Happy Mother's Day to you, to my mom, who inspires me to be a better person every day and teaches me the importance of love, family, commitment and perseverance. See, I never taught them these things, but you know what? I never said, you have to be perseverance, you have to be, you know, love is important. And remember I said, you have to commit and persevere. And, uh, so, so that is to live well, is to travel a lot, enjoy traveling and enjoy time with the family and, and you have to dress, right? Dress for success. I enjoy shopping and I enjoy dressing nicely, but you know what? The dress is about confidence, right? You dress yourself well, it's your self-confidence is too, but the most beautiful attire is a smile. Smile. So it's most beautiful, doesn't matter. So that's why I wanted to see your smiling face here. So very important, these are the things. And the third one, this is, the second one is live well, enjoy life, right? The third mantra that I have is to give back. You've seen my resume, my bio, I am a volunteer of this, I'm volunteer here, you know, every hospital fundraising, everything, I, I take part. Do you know, you have no idea. People said, how much time? How, how come, how come you find so much time to volunteer? I said, look, you just take volunteer as work. And you know why? You build your own network. And I always said, your network is your net worth. The more network you build, the more time you spend volunteering, you have no idea. I was actually, because you know, you expose yourself, I was actually volunteering in the Realtors Care Foundation Shelter Foundation, I was chair in that. And there was this, uh, real estate agent from London, Ontario. He, she, because of volunteer, we have to meet, right? A lot of times we meet and he likes me so much, he refer a business from, from a developer, come, come from Windsor to Toronto. You will have no idea how much money I made from that, for sitting in that board for volunteer position. I've made in folds, I've made so much money. Don't say that is a waste of time volunteering. You build your network, you, and that is your net worth. Because you show people how you work and people will get, give, will send you business and that's how things go around and round and round. All right, that's it, giving back, important. But I want to leave you with the last paragraph that the Toronto Star reporter wrote in that article I told you about, uh, when I first got elected. He, she said, from poverty to prosperity. That is my story, from poverty to prosperity. And then she said, Cynthia has the energy and drive and people skill to get things done. That's what she said. She only know me for two, for an hour of interview and then she kind of sends, because that's my, that's my story tells. Wanted to leave you with two thoughts, okay? The first one is, when life is sweet, say thank you and celebrate. And when life is bitter, say thank you and growth. We must say thanks, we must be thankful, we must treat every day as Thanksgiving. That is my first slide. My second slide, please. Second slide, slide I wanted to share with you is, success is in the next exit. The ability is what you are capable of doing. Motivation determines what you do and attitude determines how well you do it. And I wanted to tell everybody, you must be a visionary. You have to dare to dream, you must, must believe in yourself and you must be a visionary. The story about the being a visionary is like playing hockey. I don't know how many of you know Wayne Gretzky. Tonight is the Maple Leafs paying, uh, you know, the fire, the, the playoff. Wayne Gretzky is a very, very, is a superstar. What he says to, he has a very favorite line that I wanted to quote and share with you. I don't skate to where the puck is. I skate to where the puck is going. Thank you. Those are my words. And also, maybe just a final, final story about be like a swan. You know the swan, when you see them on the water, it's very, very calm and elegant, you know, why is it that I have to be like a swan? Is to stay cool and calm above, but pedal like hell under leaf. Thank you. Those are my words. Two minutes over, overtime. Sorry.
Thank you Cynthia. You're such a vigorous, ambitious woman. So that's, I guess, that's why you grow from poverty to prosperity. Thank you for sharing the story. So Cynthia, you, like, you said you have, um, yeah, I asked this, uh, to Talia. Uh, how about you? Like, what kind of barrier can you share with us, uh, story? Like the barrier you encountered.
My barrier, my barrier to this day is the language barrier. To this day, I'm still overcoming it every day. I am, I won't, just like you guys are shy, you don't want to turn your camera, but I'm shy of talking. I talk, I don't talk too much. And then people thought, maybe you don't know anything, but you know what? I said, I don't talk, I don't say too much, but I, doesn't mean that I don't know what's going on. So my barrier is still, is still, uh, my, 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 my speech, my, my, my talking, because you know, you see, you lose your mother tongue because you've been away from your, from your motherland for so long. But then in the meantime, you know, you're sort of like halfway between. My English is not as, not really perfect and nor is my Chinese. So I'm just like in a no man's land, you know, so I think, uh, to this day, I'm still, I'm still overcoming my barriers, it's about my language barrier. And like, just like speaking on council, you know, uh, how you don't want people, when I first come here, a lot of people, I, 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 I actually took a very, took offense to some people when, when they always say, pardon me, pardon me, you know, all the time when you say something, they don't know what it is. But I've learned over the years to speak slowly, then people will understand you better. So try to speak slowly, then, you know, that's one of the ways that I learned from, you know, from overcoming all these barrier on my life in, in, in a country that, with English being, you know, not being my, my mother tongue.
Hmm, so you're still, um, you still feel you have this language, uh, uh, barrier? Then, then how do you, like, in addition to speaking, uh, slowly, uh, what, what can you do to make it up? Like as city councillor, I would imagine you have a lot of things to do, you need to maybe persuade your colleague to do something together with you. How, how do you do that?
Well, you just, you just have to keep practicing, right? You just have to, don't be afraid to, 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 to try, you know, you just have to, you know, some, some colleagues, they, they will respect you and they, even though they don't understand you a hundred percent, they will pretend they understand you and then they will repeat. Is it, what do you mean, right? Then that will make you feel better, feel so much better. But some, some people would just say, hi Shirley. Some people would just say, oh, pardon me, right? So this is, uh, you just have to keep practicing. I think practice makes perfect. I actually shared this with one of my colleagues on council, like, uh, councillor Cole, he was an MPP and then I shared with him my, he's Italian. And I shared with him, you know, I, I'm a little bit still not very easy speaking on council. And you know what he said to me? He said, Cynthia, practice makes perfect. Try to speak on one item each time on council. It doesn't matter how much, you know, I mean, stage fright or, you know, you can't really say it well and you, you're not being very expressive, but just still do it. And I think I'm, I'm getting better now, getting better, you know, getting better. So practice makes perfect.
Hmm, yeah. And I think to try to do things well would be very extremely important, um, for people who do not Um, for people who do not s- speak the language, yeah. So you, you use the language of doing action. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you want to set a line, is that right?
Um, so, um, I, I have this question for both of our guest speakers, so Talia and Cynthia. Um, cause uh, today in a WeChat group, I saw um, some. Uh, people that talking about this discrimination. Um, have you ever encountered discrimination in the country? Like how, what is the story and how did you deal with them?
Well, Wang Yang, if you want to hear that, you have, you have another session for me. I got councillor stories for you. Councillors, councillor story.
So, so maybe I go to Talia the first and then you can think of a, a short story for us too, Cynthia?
I will, I will, yeah, Talia first and I'll tell you, I'll tell you one story, okay, yeah.
Are we talking about discrimination in Canada or are we talking about discrimination?
In Canada.
Cause in Iran, like, uh, as councillor said, the incidents are um, are endless. But what I find in Canada and uh, councillor is right, you know, things have changed uh, significantly, I find. But it doesn't mean that Canada is not a racist country, uh, it's, it means that we're, they're just better at hiding it. So something that happened uh, to me at the beginning, uh, when I wasn't speaking English. Not that I speak it well, you know, it's, this is a lifelong struggle for all of us immigrants. Um, we're never going to be perfect in any language, but what I also remember is that this is not my, the only language I speak. So maybe that's why I'm so confident, because I also know that, you know, uh. At least I'm speaking one language in addition to the English speaking person. But something that happened to me uh, at the beginning uh, of like doing a job, is that I went for an interview and. After I finished the interview, it, it was for like a mid-level management position. They asked me to, uh, and again, like remember, this is not, this was not my English at the time. And um, they asked me to go upstairs, an off-for-profit organization who claimed that they wanted. Um, racialized women, women who are minorities. And the woman said, okay, sit here, and they asked me to take a language test. Which is a discrimination um, based on the Ontario Human Rights Code, but I didn't know at the time. And this was not in the interview process, but I feel like because I had an accent, they asked me to do that. Um, it was very uh, belittling, right? After I left and was like, oh, like was it because the interview panel was all white women? And they're just like not using of um, having someone speaking with an accent because. Uh, even though my English was not that good, but I still, you know, I had my TOEFL test, I passed with. Uh, glorious remarks and you know, I was studying English at the time, uh, English literature at university at the time. So yes, um, again, like subtle racism still to this day happens, like these types of discrimination. Um, and.
What? Let's say subtle, subtle, so, like what? Hidden, hidden.
Hidden, right? Like they're not asking, they're not directly looking at you saying things. But they're implying that because you are from another country, because you look a certain way. Um, you know, you should be, you are different. One of the things that I repeatedly hear, I, to this day, is that you must be grateful that you live in this country. And it's not that I'm not grateful, but that doesn't mean that I still don't, I still work hard enough to make this country better, right? Uh, when I talk about violence against women, this is unfortunately a global issue. And Canada is not in a better situation than the countries, other countries. We have better laws, but the culture is not that different. And it's not like people in Iran, Iranian men are committed violence against women, but Canadian men aren't. So um, you know, th- those types of standards that, okay, you're coming from a country that. Maybe the culture is not as good, which is not true by the way. You must have, like you must grow up with different standards or you must have different values and because now you're here, you should be Canadianized. You had, there are certain, um, you should be modernized, that's what I'm going to put it.
Well, I always just, just so about people making fun of my accent. You know, I, sometimes I do a consolation to myself, I said, you know, I even ask them back question. Okay, if you can speak Chinese as good as I speak English, then you make fun of me. And then they'll just shut up after that, okay? So basically that's sometimes my, my, my take on that one. And speaking of discrimination, you know, I, I take it as my motivation. Every time I'm discriminated upon, it motivates me to go higher, to reach a higher. You know, give you an example, um, I, I, after I become the, I was the first woman. Uh, the first woman of Asian descent that make it to the president of the Toronto Real Estate Board. In its one hundred years history. I was the fifth woman, the first Chinese woman to become their president. And it was because of grassroots, because of grassroots voting, just like voting, grassroots, everybody has vote. And you know what I did? I planned, I, I set this goal ten years before I reached this goal. Before, every year I go and sit on a different committee, so that people will get to know me. And then that's how I got elected. And then when I wanted to move higher to be the Ontario Real Estate Council. I, I was elected three terms, director there. I wanted to be chair of that council. I failed two times, because they're all Anglo people sitting in the table. They're not being a grassroots vote, voting, you know, or only the Anglo, I'm sorry, I, I mean, I, I am, I might be saying, by saying that, I may be discriminating. Upon the Anglo people, but that's how, that was the reality when I was, you know, when I was being encountered. I feel like two times, I could not even get elected, because nobody would vote for me. And then the very quick one more, one more story was. Uh, councillor Kelly actually asked me, you know, remember, I, I said that volunteer, right? Give back to the community. So councillor Kelly recruited me to sit on the Committee of Adjustment. For the City of Toronto in the Scarborough Panel in the year two thousand and ten. I, I lo- I was lucky, you know, because he endorsed me, that's why I got into the committee. It's not easy to get into all these committees. So I got in because of him, he's my mentor. So I sat on there for four years. In tw- in two thousand and fourteen. I reapply to be reappointed. And Scarborough, can you see that Scarborough is a very Chinese, we have fifty percent Chinese people living in Scarborough? And I didn't get reappointed. And then later on I asked, I asked them why, and then councillor uh, Kelly was saying that, they were saying, you know, people were saying that you're not doing a good job. Or maybe you're too much a pro-development or something, like those are some reason that he gave me. But you know, guess what? It motivated me to run for councillor. If you don't think I'm good, I'll show you I'm good. So I went, I, I, I went to, you know, run for councillor, because nobody wants me to sit in the committee. So those are the two stories that actually quite stand out about, I thought, being discriminated. And, and there's tons, tons of stories I can tell. Like I said, I can talk all evening about all these examples of being discriminated. Yep, okay, Wang Yang?
Okay, thank you. So uh, some people say, uh, like within our own communities, um. Uh, the discrimination, um, when you encounter them, like uh. You need to think about yourself, like reflect on yourself. Like, say, for example, in Chinese community, maybe there are. You know, some Chinese Asians, they, they do not get to learn a lot about Canadian culture. So maybe they do not behave um, very well or elegantly. Or communicate in a acceptable way. So that causes, like partly, causes uh, cause this discrimination. And maybe, I don't know, uh, Talia, um, in Iranian community, uh, maybe there's some people. Or, or I say, uh, I, I believe Iranian community, they have different religions, right? Um, Christian, Muslim, uh, a, a lot of religions there. Uh, but do you have the same um, question? From either within the community or outside the community? Like, what do you see your own problem, uh, and how do you address them? And how do you see that, uh, with this general discrimination? Against the whole, you know, community? Like what would, would be your answers to those kind of questions?
Um, so I definitely cannot speak for the Iranian community. Uh, but generally, um, you know, I, I see many people coming in. Um, I don't see that, I, I, I would see this as a, like a difference of culture. I don't think necessarily one is worse than the others. Um, as councillor said, associating with other people really helps. Like these days with link classes, the language educational programs, that wasn't, they didn't exist at, at my time. Um, they do teach students, they talk about, you know, cultural differences in Canadian culture. Um, I, I, I see that as a barrier, as you know, integrating into society, like getting jobs. The culture, the, the work culture for sure is very different. Uh, for us Iranians, um, and uh, even like promoting yourself or selling yourself when you are in job market. It's a huge barrier, especially when it comes to immigrant women. Um, most of us coming from very uh, cultures that you have to be modest about your skills and, you know, values and. Uh, even if you're super educated, you have to say like, oh, I did nothing, you know, like you have to be very modest. And this types of like change happens over time. Um, about not only promoting yourself, but also learning to promote your community. And like these mentorship programs are excellent ways of talking to people. Right now, for example, I have Truth Project, I have, you know, I'm in contact with this in- incredible woman from Kenya. She has a PhD degrees, multiple degrees, she was a executive director of a couple of not-for-profit organization back in her country. She's here and it's really hard for her to get a job and it's not because of her values or because of her skills. She brings in unbelievable experience to the job market, but you know, that whole thing of saying, well, you have to have a Canadian experience, even though. She worked in a much difficult situation when it comes to, you know, human situation. Um, you know, she still has to learn about like interview skills and how to, how do you, how you market yourself to the Canadian market. And I think that's one of the biggest barriers that any community, regardless of where you come from. Um, um, that, that happens. And I know that it's comfortable to be with your own peers, with groups of people. Um, but uh, that's a really good advice to try to find other friends. They don't necessarily have to be Canadians, they can be from other cultures. And if you are an open and warm culture, open, like invite them to your homes or learn about your culture. I don't feel like anyone takes offense if you ask questions at someone who's curious and is trying to learn. Uh, as someone who's not trying to be judgmental about uh, the ways of living of a different culture. And you know, like these are some of the things that we can all do and we can all um, improve when we open our doors and our hearts to other people.
I agree. Thank you. And Cynthia, do you have something there to say? Like, what kind of problems do you see uh, in the Chinese community?
Well, I have to, you know, um, form a kind of barrier for ourselves. Do you know, I think I've always believed in that, if we do not want discrimination. We will, we should not discriminate on anybody. That is the first thing to do. And I just want to share you an- another story. Uh, one day I was in my community office, some people, there's some lady who speaks Mandarin. Uh, walk close by. And then I, I was, well, you know, I being born in Hong Kong, but my uh. You know, my heritage is, is Shenzhen, you know, it's in Shenzhen, I'm, I'm actually from mainland, but because I was born in Hong Kong. And then she says to me, oh, you mean you're from Shenzhen? Oh, I didn't know, I thought you're from Hong Kong. Oh, we should, then we should, we should support you. So I was just re- reading between the lines, even with, among the Chinese people, ourselves. There's discrimination somewhere there. I mean, I don't know who it is, but like I said, I've always believed in, if you do not want to discriminate people. You know, you just, you don't, I mean, you don't want to be discriminated, then you shouldn't be discriminated. To me, I've always believed that there's, there's only one race, the human race. It doesn't matter where you're from, like Hong Kong, doesn't matter Hong Kong, you, you're Chinese? You're from Hong Kong, you're from mainland, or you're from Macau, you're from Taiwan, we're all Chinese. We're all one race, we're all Chinese. So we, we should, we shouldn't be saying that, oh, you are, you're from Taiwan, then I, I, I'm not going to support you. Like, those are the things that we shouldn't be doing. Like Hakka people, I tell you, we're Hakka, I'm Hakka. Hakka people, that most people that persevere so much, you know, because they travel from different places. From one place to another, that's why they call Hakka. Is that they, they, they have so much perseverance, you know, they have tolerance and they work so hard. Those are the Hakka uh, values, right? I saw Li Shen, she uh, nodding her head. Because these are the type of thing, it doesn't matter where you're from, we are all one race, we are all from China, we are Chinese, right? So basically, I think that's what I've learned and that's what I think that we shouldn't be doing, you know? Doesn't matter where you're from. And I try myself to be inclusive, you know? Doesn't matter what it, you know, from main- mainland and, and, you know, Li Shen, I really thank you very much for introducing Wang Yang to me, you know? Because I actually knocked, knocked at her door and then we become, we become friends. You know, that's, that's how we, that's how we met. Yeah, that's how we met. And, and Li Shen, you, you want to say something?
Um, I, you know, for me, since you're two thousand and fourteen, yeah, you're being like a candidate for the city council, yeah?
Yeah.
You are very inspire me, your, your, uh, your personal character. Uh, give me so many stress, you know, I, from you, I learn so many things. And then la- later when I met Wang Yang, I feel Wang Yang and you very similar, the character. Want to be a leader. They said, good leader, doing the right things, that's very important. You know, for the good leader, yeah? Some leader is not doing the right things, but you and Wang Yang is a good leader, doing the right thing. So I said, I have to introduce you and Wang Yang together, because you're, you're a good leader, you can make people more, um, more unity. That's why, just you say, Chinese, always be unity. I heard Wang Yang from the CPC radio for the, talking about the, for COVID nineteen, you are in the COVID nineteen, yeah? I feel like so is, you know, in my feeling, I, I cannot expression my, my feeling, but I feel so proud for Wang Yang. And our Chinese community. Yes, that's true. Even I, I have so many friends, I still said, our uh, Scarborough councillor, I said, for Cynthia like, is our best councillor. I said, I, I learned so many things, even I, I didn't, you know, speaking in the, our WeChat, but I read every day. I knew everything you did. So I'm, I'm thankful.
That is, that is, that is work hard. That is work hard, right? My number one, my number one mantra. You must work hard for your community.
Yes, but, yeah, that's my. Like for, of all heritages, we need to work together, like Iranian, Chinese, uh, every, everybody.
We are Canadians, we are Canadians.
We're Canadian, yeah, that's true, we are Canadian. We want our country more better, you know, we build our countries better. It doesn't matter you, where you come from, yeah? It's because we like here, we choose here, that means we like it here. Then when you're right here, you have to making a more better place for, for living. This, this is why we are moved, moved to here, it's, that's what I'm thinking. It's all this, for us, we always say, doing your better things, every day you try your best, then you make. It doesn't matter how little things you did, yeah? But you have things of the kind of things you do.
So, yeah, i- if I may suggest you, 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 you Google a YouTube, on YouTube, a song called Toronto, just Toronto. And that was written, written by my friend Andy DeCampus, who's a Portuguese. He's a Portuguese and his wife is a Chinese. And one of the lyrics, the lyrics in there says, Toronto, don't care where you're from. That is, that is.
Our dream.
That is, that is the lyrics that, uh.
Thank you. Uh-huh, thank you. And, and I wonder, is there any, uh, anybody in the audience? Um, have any question for Talia or Cynthia?
Um, I actually have a question for councillor Cynthia.
Yes, yes, don't may.
Yeah, um, first, I thank you for share your, your models, that's really, it, it's very inspiring. And I just have a question, um, cause you mentioned something. You mentioned the first one, work hard, no problem, the Chinese and the immigrants and community, many of us work super hard. But I was just puzzled with one thing, so I say, if you are, if you are likable. Or being liked by people, they're trust you. Somehow I, I'm kind of puzzled here, like if you work hard, doesn't mean that you, you may be liked. Somehow, I, I'm kind of puzzled here, like, if you work hard, doesn't mean that you, you may be liked. Um, sometimes might lead to the opposite effect. So what are the secret you have, like, you know, being liked by people?
That is a very, very good question, Domi. Uh, being liked by people is not easy, okay? That's why, even like, you're right, how much, how much heart you work, if people don't like you, they just don't like you. So I think the secret is be humble and, uh, well, smile. Always smile, have a positive attitude, you know? I've always tell people, my blood type is be positive. Always be possible, uh, be positive, and always have a good attitude, then, then people will like you. I give an example, I walk into a car dealership, I wanted to buy a car. But if I don't like the salesman, you think I'm going to buy a car from him? No, right? So that's the example. And then the other, the other, another time, I didn't wanted to buy a, a condominium, but when I walk into the sales center, I like the guy. Well, I mean, I'm just exaggerating, I mean, you, you might not want to buy a condominium because of that. I actually told my husband, I bought this one for my birthday, it was my birthday. I actually walk into a sales center, and I love that condominium, you know, for, for, for an investment. It's very, like, a very, in those days, it's still quite cheap condominium, right? So I said, because I like the person, I want to buy something from him, that's how it is. That is, you know, the secret is just be positive, or always smile, and that's it, keep smiling. You know, the other story is, I, if I don't smile, I'm very serious. And then my salespeople, I was manager for Royal Page, my salespeople walk in front of my office. Just Cynthia, you look very serious, do you want to smile? Do you, can you smile more? Do you know what I did? I brought a ca- I, I brought a mirror and put it in front of my desk. Every time I look at the mirror, and I look, oh my God, I'm so ugly, oh, I'm not smiling. And every time look yourself, smile. And that's why people say, you're always smiling now, because I, I, I mean, I was, I wasn't born to be always smiling. You just have to train yourself to be, you know, put a mirror. I even told my, my staff now, when you're on the phone, put a mirror there, you have to smile into the phone, then people will like you. Does it help? Does it help?
That, that's your secret. So how about you, Talia? How, how, how do you, what's your, uh, secret of being liked?
I'm not sure if I'm liked that much, but, um, I think.
I like you.
Thank you.
I talk to you.
I also smile a lot, for sure.
Geeking, yes.
Thank you. But I think, um, really listening, and not just pretending that you listen, so active listening is also a big part. Uh, something that I've learned with community work, if you claim that you are helping them, you should start by listening to them. And, uh, actually take those, uh, those things that they tell you in consideration. Um, and it's, doesn't matter what age they are, uh, you know, when I tell you that I do talk to many young people, um, and this is not an exaggeration, they find our presentation very engaging and, and interesting, because we don't treat them like children. We treat them like people who should know about their rights, right? So our presentation is often, um, thirty to forty questions, like, really easy questions, so you're really getting, get them engaged. And, um, I, I tell them that, uh, you have many interested parties who want to limit your rights with good reasons, if you have parents, or if you have, you have, you know, teachers, and that want to limit your rights. Sometimes it's with good intention, most of the times, it, they're trying to limit your rights because they're trying to keep you safe. But sometimes you might think that these limitations are not fair, and you want to advocate for yourself, so that's why I'm here. I'm here to tell you options, and anytime you feel you're, you feel like you're being mistreated, you can speak up and talk about unfairness. And that's what, you know, maybe it's the first time that someone is telling them, and, you know, many of us parents, we just make up rules, and we say, this is what it is, and you have to obey them without explaining why, what are we trying to do? Something that I'm, I'm guilty of as a parent, so, you know, I try to explain that you should know the reasons, and you should also see if you are unfair, um, that, you know, maybe you should be called out for, believe me, my children's now, because they had these workshops and that, they do that to me. They ask for reasons, and I was like, maybe you should change your rules, or maybe you should revise them, because we don't think you're being fair. And sometimes I'm tired and I'm not being fair, so it's good to, uh, have a che- check and balance system, actually.
Mm-hmm, be fair, be fair. And I, I hear someone raised, uh, his or her hand, I cannot see so.
I think it's Zehra, uh, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's me, hi everyone, I am Turkish.
Hi, Zehra.
Hi, love there, um, I am Turkish, and I have a different perspective. Yes, we should love people, but at the same time, each people is not trustworthy, in my opinion. Like, I have a different perspective, like, when I was in high school, um, I had lots of friends that I, I, I really loved and took care of them. And the end of the day, we broke the relationship, unfortunately, as a result. They did something that not trustworthy, and I feel like most people not trustworthy, but some of the people, I think, is trustworthy. Hmm, like, I have a different perspective about this.
Mm-hmm.
What are you, what, what is your opinion?
I think this is something that we're all aware of, in terms of, you know, um, I think what councillor Rye was trying to explain was the secret of being successful or being, uh, you know, liked as a politician for sure, is to smile and, um, you know, try to gain people's trust. That's my understanding, councillor, am I wrong about that?
Yeah, be sincere.
Yeah.
And be honest, be honest, never tell, and, you know.
Yeah.
Honest, everything has to be honest.
Yeah, so it doesn't, doesn't mean that, uh, you know, you, uh, trust people because you want to have like a close relationship with them. But I think definitely as a politician, it helps if you can, you feel like you trust them, or you have a good feeling about them, or and if you are a leader in an organization, uh, to gain that trust. So it wasn't about, I, I don't think the advice was for you to go around and trust everyone. But, uh, as someone who is going to be in a position of authority, or is in a position of authority, it's good to gain trust, and not in a malicious way, but in a good way. Uh, be sincere and gain that trust.
Yeah.
What is the meaning of malicious, by the way?
Sorry?
What is the meaning of malicious?
Oh, malicious, I'm sorry, yeah, that's a good, good one. Uh, malicious means like you're mean, or you have ways to trick people, uh, to gain their trust. I think the sense, the councillor was saying that, yeah, dishonest, like, you should be sincere and get people's trust.
Just like, you know, Li Shen, I mean, the, you only have two minutes to, to make the first impression. People will judge you, whether they will like you in the first two minutes, right? Li Shen, like, you know, when you first meet me, two minutes, you, you feel that you, you can like me, and then you start building up the relationship, right? And that's very interesting. It only takes two minutes to bring, you know, the first impression, and then you can build the trust after.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Just a comment here, so if you got that impression in first two minutes, I mean, ma- many cases, it's true. And then so the smiling is very important to make that impression.
Yes, you know, if you have to be very genuine, people will see you, like, you know, I think the other word would be probably, you have to be, be yourself, right? Like, be very genuine, sincere, I think that is the word for it, you know? People will, will feel it, when they've, when they think that you're not malicious, right? You're saying that, you know, that is fake, you, people say, see that you're fake. A lot of people have, can judge people quick, uh, very, you know, I think as times go by, as you grow, you can judge people more easily than when you are younger, so I think it comes with age.
And I also think that, and that may be something that can be trained as well, because many people say, okay, the Chinese people look as very serious. Somehow, I don't know, for whatever reason, like, you know, many Chinese people or immigrants, especially from mainland Can- uh, mainland China. Uh, I, I, I can see, you know, it, it's kind of true, you know, many of them looks really serious.
Do you see that? Do you see that? Do you feel like we're too serious faces?
No, Domi is always smiling, she opened up the camera, she's smiling already.
But I, I, I noticed the many, many people from main Can- mainland China, I'm sorry, mainland China, look pretty serious, really.
Well, I know, I look pretty serious, I have a serious face. I think because the curve of my mouth is like downward, so it takes force, like, uh, strength to smile.
You know, that is trainable, Domi, you know why? Because I, when I was serious, I was like very strict, and then I trained myself to smile, so it's trainable. Actually, it's coach, it's coachable, yeah, it's trainable, yes.
Some people. You know, you know what, um, I think also, uh, you come from a country of long, long history? So maybe something there, um, but Iran is also a, a country of long, long history.
I was going to say that, I, I used to joke that I know other Iranians women, and trust me, between us, there are many people, kind of like Turkish people, that they're fair-skinned, they have blue eyes, they have, you know, blonde hair, they don't look Iranian at all. But the way that I can tell them, it's the way that we hold our jaws when we walk in the street, we also look very serious, I find, non-smiling. And I think it's because, like, because of, like, continuous harassment or catcalling in the street, you're just like, you hold yourself in a certain way when you walk in the street. Um, when I go back to Iran, they know I'm from somewhere else because I smile too much, they're like, oh, you, you're Iranian, but you don't live here, just because the way that I'm like too friendly maybe. Um, and I don't, I don't hold that against people necessarily, I think this is how we are born and raised. I also have many Chinese friends, and I never thought of them as very serious, I actually enjoy their sense of humor. Um, you know, I, when I met you Yang, I didn't think that you are unfriendly, or, you know, you don't smile as much. Um, but I think this is, you know, something that definitely gets you places, when you're friendly and you smile, for sure.
That's, I, I, I mean, like, people from a country of long history, maybe, they, there's some, uh, um, heavies, like heaviness written in the G. Uh, I once had a American student, like, he learned Chinese, um, uh, with me, and he said, oh, you know what? I can tell Europeans from Americans. I say, how do you tell? Like, to me, they look the same, but he said, okay, like, Europeans, when they walk, like, they walk like, you know, they're low, like, uh, very, very serious, um, faces, but Americans, they were like, just, oh, you know, very open, like, happy.
Happy go lucky.
That's true, yeah.
So, so I guess that's something like with the history.
Maybe it's like we carry the weight of the world on our shoulder, that's what it is.
Okay.
You're right.
Well, thank you so much, Cynthia Talia, uh, for your speeches and sharing your stories, um, that, that is inspirational. Um, thank you, and, um, well, I, I have to respect the time. So, uh, I think we'll, we'll call it a day, so wishing everybody to, uh, a, a, a very good night, okay? And.
Thank you. Nice talking to you and meeting you all, take care of yourself.
Thank you, take care, thank you.
Thank you, Yang, for organizing this.